6 o'clock straight up, everyone present? We will begin first though with roll call, which usually happens during work sessions. Missy?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm switching between about three screens, so please bear with me. Fernando Amanza?
Fernando Amanza, here.
Kelly Alter?
Kelly Alter, here.
Kate Cottarella?
Kate Cottarella, here.
Michelle Jarno, Shelley Jarno, sorry.
That's fine, Shelley Jarno, here.
Ted Long?
Ted Long, here.
Michelle Stecker?
Michelle Stecker is excused.
Thank you. Lucy Latibar Kunas?
Lucy Latibar Kunas, here.
Thank you.
Great, okay, the Board of Education is presenting somehow and showing, oh, now we have the calendar back. Now we have the flag back, which brings us to our next item of business, which is to say the Pledge of Allegiance altogether. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands one nation, indivisible, with every right and justice. All right, thank you, everyone. We need to make a motion and then approve the special meeting agenda for this evening, please.
I move to approve the special meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Amanza, you're a little bit soft on your microphone. Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's Jarno seconds. Any comments or questions? Missy?
Fernando Amanza?
Fernando Amanza, aye.
Kelly Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Kate Cottarella?
Kate Cottarella, aye.
Shelley Jarno?
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Lucy Latibar Kunas?
Lucy Latibar Kunas, aye.
Motion passes 6-0, thank you.
All right, so just a few comments about the virtual meeting. Again, apologies if anyone had any issues logging in today, additional layers of security. The chat feature is not being utilized during this time, there's a notice to that. If you have any comments, please direct them to the email listed there, to Communications. And this again is a meeting held in public, so we appreciate everybody who has tuned in and listening to us. But this is not an opportunity to engage, but it is an opportunity for you all to see the business of the day. Please remember to mute your mic and your camera if you're moving around. When you move around with your camera, it like brings you to the top of the screen and we can see you walking into the kitchen and changing your socks and everything you might be doing when your camera is on. So thank you for helping keep the distractions to a minimum here. We do have some public participation written in. And, but the secretary is gone, you want me to read them? I will read them, I think, because I think I only have them here. Give me a second to pull up the email. Lucky for me, I have three screens, but they're all different. So I don't have to switch between them. So the first letter comes from Anne Rosinko, who is a parent. This is her comments. "As a parent of an incoming senior at Eagle Valley High School, I feel very strongly that in-person learning is essential for the social-emotional health of our students. I understand that some families are uncomfortable with that option and I respect these concerns. However, there is an online option for them already in place. The isolation resulting from remote learning can be seriously damaging for this age group, especially for those who already struggle with mental health issues. I understand and appreciate the desire to keep everyone safe, but there are more aspects to take into account than just the physical safety of our children. Please consider a return to full-time, full-in-person instruction, or at least a hybrid, for the benefit of the whole person that is each of our children. Thank you for your time and service, Anne Rosinko from Gypsum." Oh, I didn't move a lot, Tom. Thank you very much, Anne, we appreciate everybody who submits their letters in the time window. This letter is from Aaron Park, from Eagle. "I would like to advocate for the district-wide planning day to be on Mondays, should we be instituting one across all school or grade levels. In planning for the start of the year, the hybrid A/B day model having either a Wednesday off or a Friday off throws the instruction of planning much more than a Monday. To begin the year, we'll be likely starting school on a Tuesday, which would automatically either put the A or B students a day behind. Furthermore, each time we have a holiday on Monday, such as Labor Day, we would encounter a problem of having unbalanced days and instructions between A and B students. In these cases, we would have to go a full week without seeing one of our groups of students, A or B, in person. Putting the planning day on Mondays would maximize instructional time," emphasis added. "In addition, Boulder Valley School District recently chose to have Mondays their district-wide planning day for similar reasons into align with other districts in the state." If you would like to see a document of potential calendars that have created that, created to illustrate the problems, click here. Respectfully, Aaron Park, science and avid teacher, Battle Mountain High School. Thank you very much, Aaron, for your input. The third letter, we have four, is from William Deportes. He just says, "Hello, is it possible to send Battle Mountain students back to full-time, five days a week if we utilize alternate facilities in addition to the high schools, such as the June Creek Elementary Building or the Weckmood Edwards Field House?" Thank you, William A. Deportes. Thank you very much, Mr. Deportes, for your comment. We consider all of this. And then finally, we have a letter from Shannon Dodds. And if you can put a timer, please, for me. "My name is Shannon Dodds and I'm a teacher at Brush Creek as well as a parent. I'm well aware that you are being bombarded with ideas and suggestions from so many members of our community, which we appreciate. As a teacher, however, we talk amongst ourselves and know you are shocked to hear this and I don't often communicate our thoughts to the decision-makers. After speaking to many colleagues from Eagle County School District as well as districts around the country, I decided it was time to share my voice. I'm writing to ask the Board to reconsider the half-day in-person learning option for the fall. I realize this was the least preferred option in the survey, but I'm wondering if parents had all of the information when expressing their interest. I believe that a half-day model, at least at the elementary level, might help reduce class size and mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Staggering students can minimize the amount of people on campus at any given time while still providing a rich educational experience for the students on a daily basis. In an elementary school, an example of a half-day model might be that students in Cohort A come from 8 to 11 and those in Cohort B come from 12 to 3. This would allow for an hour between cohorts for teachers to eat lunch, have a planning period sanitized with help, and get ready for the next group. I believe that a half-day program would provide our students with the high-quality educational and social experiences while continuing to keep our cohorts to only 10 to 12 students at a time. This model of education would benefit the students in that they would have daily school, in-school instruction, as well as daily at-home assignments to complete independently. With only 10 to 12 students in the classroom, the curriculum can be individualized and differentiated to meet every child's academic and social needs. Once the children's half-day is over, the teacher would assign tasks, assignments, and activities for the student to do the other portion of the day, whether that be that afternoon or the next morning, depending on their cohort. This would allow teachers to give explicit instructions for the at-home extended assignments prior to the child going home. The school would also be able to provide a take-home lunch, minimizing the spread of more germs for the child to enjoy after or before the school day. There are many other benefits of half-day, including, but not limited to, half-day mask wearing, smiley face, no recess in or in-school lunch, positive classroom relationships and socialization, daily in-person lessons from the teacher, ability to social distance, small class size, easily extended lessons, limited screen time, intentionally focused instructional time, access to materials they might not have at home, and individual work time with the teacher. I know there are also challenges with a half-day program, but it seems like there are challenges with every option. True. I think at this point, we have to decide which option provides students the best educational experience before considering the situation. Believe me, I get it. The last thing you want is a plan N at this point in the game, but I felt it was important to share the benefits of this model. I don't envy you having to make this hard decision, but I know you would do what is best for our community. Thank you for your time and dedication to Eagle County Schools. Sincerely, Shannon Dodds." Thank you very much, Shannon, and for everyone whose letters and comments and phone calls and conversations that we've received and considered. There's been quite a lot of work in behind the scenes and work this morning at negotiations in order to move the plan forward and we're looking forward to a really great conversation this evening as we move forward. So, that brings us to the first item of business, which is the approval of the calendar changes for the 2020-21 school year. Superintendent Quammen, you want to take it away?
Good evening, Madam President, can you hear me okay, thumbs up? Thank you. When I'm on the other screen, I can see only a couple of you. So this request is to push the start date of school from August 18th, which is a Tuesday, to the following Tuesday, which would be August 25th. Our teachers and staff members will be completely retooling the schools for the 2021 school year. We've learned a lot since March and through April and May, we've learned how to hold this to teach in a remote model and we've got quite a few things that we need to change up. And teachers and staff members don't come back until about mid-August for their contract and we won't have enough time between when they come back and when school should start on the 18th to accomplish all the things they need to do. So we're asking for an additional week of time in order for teachers to provide baseline testing for students to determine academic needs and social-emotional needs. We also need that time to meet with parents. It's going to be important that we educate them on what to expect for school year 2021, including the criteria that may trigger us moving to remote learning, how to support students in remote learning, how to access materials through Schoology, and how to get support from the school or the community in the event that schools switch to remote learning, because we know that's not easy to manage. So it's very important that we meet with parents one-on-one to explain what the school year is going to look like and that takes significant time. Teachers also need to receive training in how to adjust their lessons to be more conducive to remote learning. In the event that we're able to hold school in person, we still expect that we'll have high rates of absenteeism due to quarantines that will be rolling through the community at different times. So we're trying to be more aware of that in our lesson planning, trying to be more accommodating to families who are learning from home and that requires a different level of technical expertise and general lesson planning. We also need to give teachers time to apply what they've learned in the professional development that we're able to provide in that first week that we come back. Without this additional week, they would learn some new skills and how to design these lessons, how to co-plan and work together to overcome the challenges of remote learning, but then instantly they're in classrooms with students. So we've had actually excellent turnout of teachers who have given their time up over the summer. This is time that they're not contracted, but we've been offering professional development through the summer on some of these items and some teachers have taken that time to utilize the training. But we're going to have plenty more training that we need to do in August and they need time to implement that by changing their lessons. And finally, they're going to need team planning time. That can happen at grade levels in elementary, it might be content level in high school, could be vertical meetings between levels. But there's a lot of time that teachers are going to need to spend working together, collaborating on their lesson plans and making sure that they have everything prepared for an effective and efficient start on August 25th. So there is attached in Board docs, a sample of what that calendar would look like. We do intend to give buildings and teachers the autonomy to use those five days in the way that they choose best. So we will have some district professional development options available for them. So if there are teachers who need some additional training in literacy or numeracy if they find themselves teaching that in elementary, or perhaps co-teaching or dual-language instruction, we will have those options in the menu for teachers during those five days. But really, it will be at the discretion of principals and teachers themselves as to how to utilize that time. And this is a, this is an action item and you'll see a motion in your agenda. If you have any field, any questions, if you have any.
Question, if anyone doesn't have it before me. So my question is that I was looking at it and just comparing it to last year's and other than what we've approved and the only difference that I can see is that we'll be moving from the 10th to the 24th for teachers only. But then I don't, at least it doesn't become apparent to me that there are any other major changes. Am I correct?
The major changes, the start date for students moves from Tuesday the 18th to Tuesday the 25th. Other than that, it doesn't change teacher contracts time. So this change comes at no monetary cost to the district. It just allows teachers and principals more time to work through the logistics that they need to figure out because of COVID-19 changes and also the significant planning changes to the lesson.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was any thought given to the possibility of starting high school on Monday instead of on Tuesday? Since we will right out of the chute be goofing up the sort of two-day-a-week model. It seems like it's not that important that high school and elementary, I mean, currently they don't start on the same day due to the testing anyway. So I'm wondering if we could just back that up to that Monday or if we're going to make Wednesday be like a regular day or what's the thought there?
Would we add that extra week? We try and be at five days because all the levels believe they can accomplish what they need to within those five days. And the thinking was if Tuesday was a good enough start for the regular school year, it would be a good enough start for this model as well. And I think it's a good time to reflect on the public comment from Aaron Park, who's a science teacher at Battle Mountain High School, who's recommending that Monday be used as a planning day. We're not totally wed to the Wednesday as the planning day. We're wed to the concept that it happened on a consistent day across the district. There are a lot of factors that we have to consider in what day that might be, but we could still have conversations with teachers and principals to see if that day moves to Monday, which would address the concern that you raised.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, but if we vote on it tonight, it seems like that ship has sailed and we would have determined that high schoolers wouldn't come until Tuesday. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how we...
There's a piece of the plan that allowed for us to make some edits or additions or changes to it if we have reason to, if data changes, if public opinion changes, if the position from teachers and principals needs to be modified. So we can address that in the next five weeks before school starts.
So are we in agreement that it would be easier if we went with the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday right away?
Depends on who the "we" is. I think...
You?
I'm open to talking about it, for sure. I mean, all I've heard from is Aaron Park on that. I've heard plenty of opinions from others that would prefer it to be Wednesday, but I can see a lot of logic in her argument, so.
Well, I mean, I think there's the issue of, do we switch the day off to always be Monday? If we determine we're not going to do that or there's some reason that transportation or all sorts of other things that come into play that it doesn't work and we stick with Wednesday, it seems like it would make more sense to have student contact start on Monday. But we would have already voted that it doesn't start till Tuesday, so I don't know how that would, what would happen.
I think we need the five days, for sure. So I don't think we've entertained doing just four days. I think our bigger schools are going to run into challenges with that. When you talk about those parent meetings and testing of students, they're going to have just enough time to do that with the days allotted. So if we were to cut that down to four, I think we would put them in a bad spot.
Well, I would argue that, I mean, given that we've set up this two-day-a-week schedule to have half the kids go one day less right away is, you know, it's problematic. I mean, it's a problem to have half the kids, if you're supposed to teach something on Monday and on Tuesday and each day it's to half the kids and half the kids aren't coming on Monday on the very first week. And I mean, I really don't think it matters that middle school and elementary schools stay on the same schedule. But for high school, I think at least at Battle Mountain, the way that it's going to work, it would, I know less about how Eagle Valley, I know they're on a different system and I know less about it. But, I mean, why would we start? I mean, is one more teacher's day worth getting them all out of sync immediately?
They're going to get out of sync anyway in September when Labor Day hits, so.
Well, so then we've got two.
Yeah, it's going to just continue to be kind of a...
Well, I mean, those are the only two.
Yeah, a recurring challenge, so I think that's a conversation that we could engage. I would have a hard time committing to that without principal input.
Without what, principal input?
Input from principals.
All right, well, there, just to be clear, there are only two. Well, there would be that day and Labor Day. But those are the only, until we get into second semester, those are the only two days where Monday is an issue. I mean, I don't know, I don't want to belabor this, but I do think it is strange that we would start on a Tuesday, given that we're in a inequitable number of days that kids would go. I just think that for high school, we should start on Monday. But that's, I don't know.
I'm open to that and that's a decision that we can make. You could amend this motion if you want to and push for that change.
I mean, if I don't and it's made and we vote on it, we can't have kids there on Monday, can we?
You'd have to change it again, you'd have to vote on it in early August to make that change.
Yeah, that seems like when families make plans and... I don't know, I mean, how do other board members feel about the Tuesday start given the every-other-day situation with high schoolers?
I guess I feel like most faculty members and probably the staff and administrators at the schools are used to dealing with it. I think that it's a similar situation, it's a similar situation we have at CMC where it seems like some years you just have a lot of Mondays that, you know, have holidays or whatever and we try to schedule around that, but sometimes you can't. So we let people know the days that are going to be off and my impression of it is we let the, you know, the faculty make the arrangements that they need to make to make that work for them and their students. I did hear from one principal that he was against either having a Monday or a Friday be the planning day because that ends up being a three-day kind of day off, days off for students. And he felt like that was not a good option. So is it accurate to say that in the past, the school years have always started on a Tuesday?
Not always, I would say. Many times they have, but I don't think it's always the situation.
I think you're, I think you're wise to try to get principal input, try to get faculty input. Maybe this, we've heard one from Aaron, maybe other faculty could weigh in on that. I kind of agree with Shelley though too, that it feels like once you vote on it and it's gone, it's a lot harder to bring the ship back than it is to, you know, set it off on the right, the right...
Remember why we're asking for this? We need the additional days to plan and have meetings with parents and teachers. And high schools, we've got schools with 950 students in them. That's a lot of parent meetings, that's a lot of student meetings. So I think that they need that time in order to do the planning, in order to retool their lessons. So we're asking for the five days. Our high schools have always been able to demonstrate flexibility within their schedules to even things out like this. When they have blocks on Wednesday and Thursday and they have short weeks, sometimes they would switch their schedule so that those blocks didn't happen or they would move the block days to other days. So the high schools will figure out how to even that out among themselves. But I think it's important that we advocate for those days.
Just to clarify here for everybody, what we're doing tonight is approving two different things. One will be the calendar change, which gives the additional planning days. And then the other one is to approve the plan for opening the schools and procedures for maneuvering through this school year with COVID, which includes quite a bit of flexibility. So to address Shelley's concern and other people's concern about the imbalance, the principals in the schools will then adjust their A/B days. Maybe they'll flip them or just, you know, rotate and have it be... There's flexibility for them to change the calendar and the instruction during the school year to fit each school's needs. So we won't have to change the calendar, we can have, you know, request the principals to address the inequity as they set their schedule. Is that accurate? Yes. My question is, not to leave this, we'll come back and make sure everybody's happy with what we're approving, is when are the testing days set for? They're different now, elementaries always have them. And then usually they have their testing days when the other children start school. But are they all going to happen in these extra days for all the levels? So when we start on the 25th, everybody's going to be starting with instruction?
Yeah, yeah, the testing days will happen within those five days. And I can't tell you what days those will be because they're different by school. Red Sandstone, for example, with 170 students can get through their testing in a day, a day and a half. I take a brush creek with 350 students and it's going to take them several more days to get through the testing. But we intend for the testing to occur within those five days.
But just to be clear, I mean, there's not testing at the high school or middle school level, is there?
At middle school, they could very well utilize benchmark testing through NWEA.
So at the high school level, I mean, I don't know, but historically, there has not been testing, Kate. So I mean, it would just be that they have those days as planning days, but there are no kids in the building. I mean, that's my understanding. Does that fill what you picture?
Yeah, elementary will certainly do testing. I think that middle school will probably utilize NWEA testing for baseline because we've got to figure out where kids are. At the high school, that testing is not common, but they have to completely retool all of the lessons. So they have the most significant lesson plan changing level between elementary, middle, and high school.
I don't, to me, it feels somewhat arbitrary, the difference between four and five days and, you know, that five is enough, but four isn't. I don't know, how would you know? But, I mean, it's fine. I do think you need to, there are complexities that, you know, you can't just have school on Wednesday because you didn't have it on Monday because there are kids that go to CMC for a class on Wednesday or there are kids that, you know, have made other, you know, there are things that go on on Wednesday because that schedule has been made that way. So, I mean, one option might be that with Labor Day, you switch it, which kids come and then you'd be back to even. But that's the only thing that I can really think of that would even it out. And rather than have, you know, A through all kids miss two days that M through Z kids went. But, I mean, I'll leave it at that, but just, I guess I wish this had been discussed.
Any other board members have questions or comments or concerns?
I guess I would just add, I'm somewhat in agreement with Shelley on the basics and it seems to me that the most logical solution, again, and it would just be for Eagle Valley and for Battle Mountain, would be potentially swapping that Labor Day and that A/B for that one week, which is like mildly confusing for families, but this is all pretty confusing for families and everybody's schedule is pretty wonky. So that seems like it would balance and probably make sense for teachers based on the lesson planning and sort of teaching the same thing on, you know, an A/B cycle to not necessarily get one or two weeks off. So that to me seems to be the most logical solution, but it seems like that could be potentially worked out, you know, with those building principals and those teachers because I'm sure for them, this can be advantageous to be on the same schedule too. So I guess that would be my thing. It seems like the planning days are definitely necessary. So, you know, it seems like you could barely have enough at this point. So that would be my sort of thoughts.
Yeah, I think that's an easy solution for these first couple weeks.
This is not going to be the only glitch in the plan. It's just the first one right now. And we had a conversation, as I was listening this morning into negotiations, which was a real treat, not having been able to participate with that before we went electronic. We talked a lot about trust in the system, trusting in the principals to come up with the unique solutions to the problems that are going to be unique to their buildings and to their levels, to make sure that all kids are getting what they need. And I believe we've talked through the days. It is a little bit awkward starting off on the wrong day, but I think that they'll be able to manage that. It is a little bit awkward starting off on the wrong day, but I think that they'll be able to manage that. And it is the amount of days that we had gone through many conversations and negotiations that everyone's agreed that that was the right amount of time that they were going to be allotted to get their planning and their testing and their ducks in a row. Any other questions or concerns for the board regarding the calendar? We'd be happy to hash through more stuff if we need to. If not, is there a motion?
I'm going to accept the school year calendar for 2021, which moves the start date from Tuesday, August 18th to Tuesday, August 25th.
Second.
Further comments or discussion? Missy?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Almanza?
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Kate Caccarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarna?
Shelley Jarna, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. T. Varcunas?
Lucy LeCevarecunas, aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So it takes us to the next thing. I just had a couple of comments about listening to the negotiations. Like I said, we don't always get a chance to cram into the room when they're talking about this stuff. And I was so impressed and pleased with the high degree of collaboration and just delighted by the collaborative, cordial, professional relationship that we have between the administration and the association. And such a high-quality team, everybody looking out for each other's best interests and really trying to work together in such a challenging time. It was, it was a long three hours. What I'm also pleased with is the high correlation from what I believe Superintendent Qualman report is the result of the meeting and the executive summary, because that's usually what the board has only heard before, is the executive summary. And there's a, but there's a very high correlation to what we hear from the administration and what goes on in the meeting over several hours. For the most part, I'm very grateful to talk about two sentences is the summary instead of the three hours that it took to get there. But it was, like I said, a great experience listening in the last couple of times on the negotiations. So thank you, everybody, for their work and everyone for listening in. I guess what we have going on technologically right now is that the Google Meet caps at 250 people. And so no other people can call in now if they want to listen. They're working with the tech department, and anybody who is missing this right now live is going to be, is being recorded by Hi5 Media, so you can let your friends know that shortly, as soon as possible, it will be, you know, available on the website and on Hi5's website and the channels and TV. So we'll get out to the public and we apologize to anybody who's not able to listen in right now, what's going on. I think that's all those comments, and so we will now move on to the Eagle County Schools Restart Plan. Superintendent Qualman, it's your show again.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'll ask the tech department to switch the presentation over to the slide deck. I'll pause until they get that up.
Are you presenting? He's ready. Do too much. Okay. Okay, just a minute. I'll present.
I can present from my. You guys have too much happening.
So do you need me to do it?
Yep.
Thank you for your patience. We're trying to work on the 250 item as well.
You don't want to work on that, and I'll just present from my computer.
I think we're working on it. We should have it in just a second.
Okay, I'm ready.
Thank you for your patience. Here it is, coming up.
So I think I'm presenting at this point. Could somebody say if you can see my screen or not, because I can't see you anymore?
I can see it.
Yeah, there it is. Now it's full screen.
Perfect. That's what I'm hoping for. All right. Well, thank you for your patience in getting this up. I want to thank everybody who's online tonight. It looks like we have the best turnout for a board meeting that we've ever had. And that's saying a lot because we've gone through some contentious issues in my time with the district. But to have over 240 people turn into this is, it's inspiring to me. I see a lot of teachers, a lot of parents. I even see some students on there, a lot of community leaders. So I appreciate everybody's interest in this plan. And I think the more people that hear the message today, the better. So I appreciate you being on the meeting. So I just want to start with the contents of this plan. Whenever I sit through a presentation like this, I need to frame my mind around how many slides are we talking about? So we'll have 39 slides. That's a lot of slides, but I think they'll go faster than you think. So pace yourself as we move through the content here of 39 slides. So I want to start with some assumptions. There's some things that we all have to accept as we start planning for what a school year is going to look like. First of all, epidemiological information and data changes every single day. So those of you who monitor the Eagle County metrics on Public Health's website can get on there and track and see as information changes around prevalence of the disease positivity rates, even broken down by demographics. With that data, with the changes in that data, we see public sentiment change. And we've experienced that in the last several weeks. We've also recognized that there's a wide variety of public opinions that exist regarding how we should restart school. And I appreciate every comment that I've received and it's been a lot. So emails, phone calls, text messages, and people making sure that they provide the data source to support their opinion. So I appreciate all the active engagement and helping us figure out what to do and know that all of those messages are read and shared with my team. It's important to point out, though, that there's no definitive source for rules or guidance in how or if to restart schools. We see mixed messages coming from the federal government. We've seen slow to mixed messages coming from the state. And within the county, I think it's important that we realize that that information and our collaboration with public health is the closest that we can get to definitive data that is most accurately reflecting what we are experiencing in Eagle County School. Number five, I think is interesting, that research can be found to support most opinions. So I've had some emails that are requesting some dramatic moves, and they can always find evidence to support that. So that's, that's always, it keeps us on our toes. And then the final one is, again, our partnership with Eagle County Public Health. We have to rely on them to get the accurate data, to know what's the capacity in our hospitals, what's the prevalence rate in our community, positivity rates, number of cases. All of that impacts our decision. This next slide, I think it's important to point out all the different groups that we work with to inform our plan. So outside of these that are listed, I really want to thank my leadership team, the district leadership team, including all the principals. We have met for countless hours throughout the last few months, talking about what this plan is going to look like. Endless meetings, endless email chains, and I appreciate their perseverance in working through this. I know board members have also been engaged in outreach to their constituents, collecting information directly. And I know it's been a lot more hours than you thought when you signed up to be a board member. But all that extra work is paying off in this process. First on the list here is Eagle County Education Association. That's our teachers' union. We have almost 500 very dedicated teachers in this community, and ECEA advocates strongly for them, as they should. I appreciate the collaboration that we have with ECEA and the value that they play in representing teachers both here locally and through CEA at the state capitol. And then listed here are all the other partners that we have utilized in making our plan or organizations whose publications we look to for information. And the very last one I want to point out specifically, there's a variety of district plans from all over the world that we have looked at. We specifically looked at countries where the return plan has been very successful, like Denmark, for example. And we've looked at some countries where it has not been successful at all, like, for example, in Israel. But we've looked at Finland. We've looked at Sweden. Again, Denmark, we've looked at schools around the country and around the state of Colorado. So the point being here, we have referenced many, many different resources, and all of those feed into the plan that you're going to hear about tonight. Ultimately, when we make decisions for our school district and our families and our students, it has to be based on Eagle County-specific data. So I put into this presentation links to the dashboards that Eagle County Public Health has created. These are excellent resources, and I appreciate their reliance on data and the transparency, the transparency with which, or the philosophy of transparency, so that they can share all this data with the public. So everybody can see exactly what's happening in Eagle County. This presentation is linked in our board docs, which you can reach through eagleschools.net. And in that presentation, these different metrics and dashboards are linked. So you can follow this if you want to, to go in and see all these. But we check these things daily, and they help inform us about what we should be doing as a district. Schools reflect the communities they serve. By that statement, I mean that our schools reflect the norms, beliefs and behaviors of what everybody in our community is doing, thinking, feeling. We also reflect the level of financial support that our community is willing to provide to the district. For many weeks, I've been advocating that schools have the ability to transform. And I think that in the past school year, we demonstrated that through our leadership of designating equity as a priority for our school district. Mind you, this was, this was happening in August of 2019. This is pre-protest. This is pre the massive expansion of the Black Lives Matter movement. So we, we believed that equity needed to be a priority for us, and we reached out to many of our community partners to join us in that effort. And I think that from what I've observed in our community, we saw traction in that. We see many of our partner organizations see relevance in that. And now we also see it, our nation, believing that there's more that we can do to address equity. I'm not claiming that Eagle County School was the catalyst for a national movement. But I think locally that we definitely put a stake in the stand and said, this is important to us. We're going to designate our time, our energy, our resources to having difficult conversations and to moving the needle on equity. My point being is that we have the power to transform, but we could only do it with the support of the community, which we received. I've also been stating in recent weeks that we have the ability to lead in moving our community back to normal. We understand that schools functioning five days a week is an antecedent to a healthy economy. But I also have realized in recent weeks that we can't do that at the expense of the health of our staff and our students. So before schools can get back to normal, we need to talk about the community's responsibility. The last bullet here is just to reiterate that we want kids back in school. We need them in front of teachers and we need them with their peers. We know that that is the best education that we can provide is when we have them in school in person. But we can't do that at the expense of the health of staff and students. So we understand that there's a lot riding on us getting back to school five days a week. With that, we need to be honest about community transmission and disease prevalence of COVID-19. Our schools can only open and stay open when our community decides to value public health and change behaviors for the long haul. By that, I mean, I've read a lot of Veil Daily articles and got sucked into the rabbit hole of the comments in the Veil Daily and even reading stories about people being arrested in the Walmart parking lot for having an altercation about wearing a mask or walking the wrong way in City Market. Those debates need to stop. We need to put our energy towards following the five commitments to containment that public health has identified for us. The only way that we can get schools open in a safe and consistent manner for in-person instruction in the coming months is if we can bring down community transmission and disease prevalence. And as a school district, we can't do that alone. We need our community to engage in that effort so that we can then open schools. So this has to be a community effort, and I'll touch on that a little bit more later in the plan. With that, I'd like to share with you the three models in which Eagle County Schools could operate this year. These are delivery options for instruction. You'll notice that there's intentionally no Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, or hierarchy of which comes first. These three options are laid out in a way to acknowledge that we will be moving in between these plans as conditions allow or conditions demand. And in the middle of all four of these options, you can see constantly changing data. That constantly changing data is primarily epidemiological. So as disease spreads or wanes, we have the ability to make some decisions to change instruction. But we also are dealing with a lot of other unknowns. We're dealing with unknowns in terms of enrollment numbers. Our resources from state and federal government are changing. So there's sometimes talk of new relief programs, and then those go away. And then we get threats from the federal government that we might not be funded at all. So we're working with a lot of inconsistencies and public opinion changes. We've seen that happen in the last few weeks. We'll be mindful of that, and we'll reach out for opinions as this year progresses to see if we're moving in the right direction. But let's talk for a minute about these three options. Let's take the left one. The darkest red is full remote. That's K-12. So there will be times in the school year when we have to have everybody at home and we'll be teaching full remote. Over on the right side, you see five days a week, K-12. That's back to normal. Hopefully, by the end of the school year, we might be able to get back to five days a week if we have a vaccine and we're able to ensure the safety of all our students and staff in person. The top model, there's four days a week. That's for elementary school, middle school and Red Canyon High School. And then Battle Mountain, Eagle Valley and Bill Skye Snowboard Academy would be on a hybrid schedule. I'm going to spend the next few minutes talking about that option and getting into more details because I think that's what a lot of people on the call want to, want to know. What does that mean for my student at school? In the presentation, I'll also talk about what the remote options look like and what full remote looks like. But I just want to understand in this plan that we're proposing to the board that we will be moving between these three, so we're not asking the board to pick one of these three plans. The plan includes all three of those elements, and we will move between those as our data and resources allow. So this slide is just defining for the board that we're asking you to adopt this plan that has three possible scenarios and that you're not asked to pick just one of them. So you're not voting tonight to open schools in a four-day plan. It's July 22nd, July 22nd, and we just passed a motion to start school on August 25th. So in over a month's time, do we expect that our epidemiological situation is going to be exactly the same as it is today? I would argue that there's no way that we can know that. We can't predict the future. So to say that we are going to open in a certain model when we're still four or five weeks away from that, I think is disrespectful to the community, and it gives them hope around some concept that we're likely going to change. I would give as an example Denver Public Schools. They're on the third iteration of a plan that they've told their public, here's how we're going to open. Three different times they've told them, this is how we're going to function in this school year. That's 90,000 students, 90,000 families, and it's probably, I don't know how many teachers, probably 200,000 teachers that they're trying to maneuver through this system. So, or excuse me, not 20,000. So the point is, there, we want to provide you an accurate understanding of what our plan is going to look like, but that it's going to be in flux depending on the information that we get on our local epidemiological data. Third point here on board action. Please consider what you've heard from your constituents. That's going to play in heavily in your vote. Also, the survey data that we've collected a couple of times over the summer, and we'll continue to do that throughout the school year. And current epidemiological data needs to also inform our decisions. And finally, the last point here, I think, speaks to something I mentioned to Mrs. Jarno moments ago, that this plan represents our best thinking right now with the data, and, but we can adjust this as conditions allow or demand in coming weeks. So now I'm going to shift into explaining what the elementary model would look like in the four-day-a-week schedule. And I'll explain it for elementary, middle and high school. So if we are to come back into in-person instruction at elementary, I want you to think of a one-room schoolhouse. We will be able to bring students into elementary schools in smaller cohorts than they would usually be in, smaller class sizes. That increases physical distancing. It puts a strong emphasis on relationships with teachers. They're going to have a consistent educator for several weeks at a time throughout an entire day. And that's going to really allow teachers to build the stronger relationships and know exactly the supports that students need. exactly the supports that students need. And again, this is a four day a week schedule with students. These next couple of slides are just graphics to help you visualize how this change occurs. So in a typical third grade class, you would have two teachers and they might have 25 students each. This, this slide is really just meant as a demo. So this is not intended to represent any specific school or guarantee that these are class sizes that happen. This is typical. So one of those teachers might teach in English and the other might teach in Spanish and that affords us our district-wide dual language focus. The model that we're proposing, we're going to take two teachers who would typically serve as a reading interventionist or a math interventionist and a specialist who teaches any of the elective classes. And, and these are all certified teachers. And we're going to bring them into a classroom where they have their own cohort of students that they will instruct. And that's going to bring that classroom size, you see those numbers at the bottom, down to 12 or 13 per class. That allows for more distance. It, it allows for much more individualization and differentiation of instruction as well. And I think the, the logical question when you see this slide is, is an interventionist or a specialist willing or capable of providing instruction for 12 or 13 kids all day, every day for, for two or three weeks at a time? So let's, let's address that. Let's talk about educator quality. The content experts would be able to share planning responsibilities with their grade level teams or co-plan. So if we go back to this slide, this teacher who typically teaches third grade in Spanish will have a day of, of planning when they can work with these other teachers and incorporate some ideas into the lesson plans that they're, they're conducting. So that, that co-planning time is essential. Teachers can also provide virtual lessons from other classrooms while in school. So for example, if, if this is a reading interventionist, that person can, while in school, utilize virtual instruction. So they could set up a camera and do some intervention for students in, in this person's class or this person's class or this person's class while those students are still in their other classrooms. So really what that does is it preps students for remote learning and it leverages experts at each grade level. Students would still receive P.E., art, music, recess, all the normal things they, they would receive in a normal elementary school program, but those elements are going to be supervised or, or provided by that one-room schoolhouse teacher in partnership with all those other experts in the school. And depending on, on how schools set this up, and they would have some autonomy in this plan, they might rotate students every two or three weeks in, in their cohorts so that they have access to the other teachers. And I think this facilitates the dual language program staying viable through this year. So why do we need Wednesdays without students? And again, we, we may have a conversation that those become Mondays and we can address that at another time. But why do we need one day without students? And it's the co-planning piece. Teachers are going to have to work together to make sure that their, that their lesson plans are utilizing the expertise of, of everybody on their team. Also, they're not going to have the normal planning time like they would in a typical school day. And, and that means they, they won't have the normal meeting time either. So we need a day when they can have all the meetings listed here in that last bullet point. Those are individual education plans, advanced learning plans for students with a GT designation, gifted and talented, English language development plans. Professional learning communities mean that they're working together, looking at student data and planning instruction. I L T's instructional leadership team. So there's, there are leaders within each school who are teachers and they need time to plan how they're coaching their fellow teachers. Staff meetings, grade level meetings, vertical meetings. So there's a lot of time that they're going to need, a lot of things that they're going to need to make up on, on those planning days. Another question that people might have is about intervention and special services. How can those be provided if the interventionist is with a cohort of students? It's important to understand that interventions will be much more manageable when you have a small class size. So instead of 25, 26 kids in a class, if you're down to 10 or 11 kids, you're going to know much better what those students need and you'll be able to differentiate individualized instruction because you're going to have a much smaller class size. Also, every licensed educator can provide interventions. The, the specialists don't need to necessarily be the people who provide those interventions. So if we can train the classroom teacher, all the different ins and outs of a particular individual education plan or English language plan or advanced learning plan, then they can all help execute those interventions. And then the content specialists, when they co-plan on Wednesdays, they can prep classroom teachers for those interventions. So basically, again, we're all working together towards that same end. All right, I'll get into the middle school model now in, in the four day week. I think the key point is here is that we can reduce class sizes in middle school. So let's look what that, that would look like. It would be more manageable cohorts. It would be increased physical distancing. We're able to maintain the middle school philosophy and it would be four days a week with students. And before I proceed, I'd like to ask if Dr. Katie Jarno is, is on the call. She's really our middle school expert, having worked as a president many years in, in middle schools. And she could much better explain the middle school philosophy than, than I can. So I would ask her to give us the brief explanation of, of why this model is, is, we think, the best fit for middle school.
Sure. And I'll try to be brief. So some of the pieces at middle school that we're really trying to preserve that are super important are the teaming aspect of middle school where we have core teachers, counselors, special ed teacher, ELL teacher, who all work with the same cohort of kids, the same grade level of kids. And that's really important in terms of, the middle school philosophy really came about in the late seventies and early eighties out of brain research. We know that our middle school kids are very different from elementary and from high school in that they have more brain development, their hormones are starting. I'm sorry, my dogs are playing in the background. And so this leads to needing to give kids a lot of support in terms of social emotional learning, mindfulness, emotional regulation, executive functioning skills. And so by keeping those grade level teams together, it's really important to that learning. We also have a lot of different programming in middle school. One of the important pieces of the middle school philosophy is getting kids exposed to things and interested in things so that they're better prepared to start planning their path into high school and beyond. And so things like, like all the different specials and Avid and advanced math and leadership instruction and all of the S E L learning that our counselors, most of our middle school counselors teach classes as well. So trying to preserve those pieces, you'll remember last week I mentioned that principals worked on eight different models, nine if you include the hybrid model. And six of those were trying to mimic the Little Red Schoolhouse idea. The Little Red Schoolhouse idea that we're looking at at middle school where a classroom of kids stays together does not work at middle school. First off, we have to have highly qualified teachers in secondary. So a math teacher can't also teach English unless they are certified to teach English. The second piece is that having, if we group kids and keep them in, in their classroom-sized groups, then we do away with all of that special programming, Avid, advanced math, dual language. We end up tracking kids and segregating our schools, which is not what we want to do. So the model that we came up with that Mr. Quallman will show you in a moment here, really addresses what's possible in middle school and also the, the sort of special pieces that middle schoolers need for us to preserve in order to help address the executive functioning, the social emotional learning and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Dr. Jarno. I think that helps explain this model. Again, I'll demonstrate for you what the change looks like for, for middle school. Let's take a typical eighth grade. You would have four teachers, class sizes of 32. So you're at 128 students in this grade, grade level. Again, this is a demonstration only. This isn't a particular school and, and we, we can't give exact numbers because every school's going to do this a little differently. But what we would do is, is pull in specials teachers or interventionists into this model and then we can divide those classrooms into smaller cohorts or, excuse me, smaller class sizes of 21. And that helps social distance so we can spread kids out a little bit more. And with mask wearing, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we're better able to control disease spread. Educator quality again is, is going to be the concern and you'll see that we, we address that in similar ways as we talked about in elementary. A difference here is that the highly qualified, I should put that in quotes, that's a federal standard that we have to meet and that still provides for that in all subjects. Again, they'd have the co-planning on Wednesdays and grade level team plans on Wednesdays. They could still provide virtual lessons to other classrooms, just like we discussed in elementary. And they're still going to have a wide variety of electives like, like they always had. The big difference here in the middle school model is that the student cohorts rotate so that they see content experts. So in other words, the actual cohort size in middle school is, is still the grade level. So in this case, it would be 128 students. So that is your cohort size. But they're rotating between five or six teachers. So they're getting all that content, but they're not exposed to students in, in other grade levels. And why Wednesdays with kids? You're going to see the same reasons here. They need that planning time so that they can develop their lessons and to co-plan with their content specialists on their teams. And they can also share how to provide interventions best with, with their peers. Intervention and special services, this is also a repeat of what we saw in elementary. And any licensed educator can provide those interventions and they'll need that Wednesday time to, to get coached up on, on how best to do that. A key point that's different on this slide from elementary is that specials could be assigned to grade levels by quarters, putting a specials teacher as a member of that team for a quarter so they could really get in-depth into different specials at that time. So now we'll transition to the hybrid model. So this would be for Battle Mountain, Eagle Valley and Belsky and Snowboard Academy. And this is hybrid instruction. So in this model, we increase distancing, but we're still able to provide the, the full high school curriculum. So let's talk through what a typical schedule would look like for our high school kids. They would be divided into two groups by last names. A half of students would attend school on Monday and Thursday and the other half would attend on, on Tuesday and Friday. Wednesdays would be used primarily for teachers to have meetings for co-planning, individual planning time. And there would be a few classes that could be held on Wednesdays. We have some that are very, they're, they're facility-specific like automotive, culinary, ceramics, architectural drafting, technology classes. So if, if they would require more project time, we, we might host some of those classes on Wednesdays. That also becomes a great day for some of our dual enrollment programming that we do in conjunction with Colorado Mountain College and they could use that for block time as well. When students are not in school, they're going to be tasked with completing learning activities independently and that's in a flipped classroom model. So if a student attends on Monday and Thursday and not on Tuesday, Friday, those Tuesdays and Fridays that they're not in school, they will certainly have agendas and tasks and to-do lists that they need to accomplish in that time. But I think that, that begs the question of what exactly is a flipped classroom? So in a flipped classroom, the two days of instruction that students have in school will have to maximize teacher-student interaction. So those are things like direct instruction from the teacher, perhaps labs, perhaps discussions that need to happen in, in the room with everybody present. And, and those are hard to do online as we're experiencing right now. But, but the, the in-classroom instruction, like let me give an example of a typical high school class might be an hour long and you would do direct instruction for 30 or 40 minutes. And then you'd use 30 or 40 minutes to task students with doing some practice problems and the teacher would be able to walk around and see how they're doing. So in the flipped classroom model, they might record some of that, that lecture that the students could do on their own time. And then when the students are in class, they help them practice the problems or provide that problem-solving skills, help them overcome the challenges to, to the work that they can't do at home. And then when the students are at home for their two days, it's going to be primarily delivered, content delivered digitally. So that could be instructional videos, pre-recorded. It could be reading assignments, project creation, project-based learning tasks or virtual group work. If you're in a group of three or four kids, you could get online and do that work at home. And assessments might shift to online as well. So, so basically we've got to maximize the in-person instruction time when kids are in school, but still have very clear tasks that they're working on when they're home. And I think the big change here is, is this, this third point, that students must be responsible for keeping up and promote learning tasks so that they can succeed and earn credit. We don't have all of our students prepared to accept that responsibility, frankly. And in the first few weeks of school, we'll need to explain to them that, that this is a new reality for them, just as it is for, for, for teachers and parents, that they've got to understand that, that we will get through a lot of the work when they're at school, but they have a responsibility to, to pick up some of it when they're at home. They will also have access to remote support during their days of out-of-school instruction. So like I said, that Monday, Thursday student, when they're at home on Tuesday, Friday, if they need support, the high schools will have set up for them office hours from, from teachers so that they, there are people who are, are covering every minute of the day that they could either sign into a chat room and, and talk with the teacher and get, you know, help them work through problems or, or get advice as to how to access content or, or work through challenges. I think one of the key reasons that this system works well for us is that, well, really a couple of reasons. It divides the population in the school in half. So instead of a thousand people in the building, you have 500 in the building. And, and that really allows them to, to spread out a lot more and, and decrease the likelihood of, of spread and contagion. But the other really, the, the big reason is the abundant options that it affords. So we're still able to have advanced placement, dual enrollment, all the arts, technology, physical education, culinary vocational classes that we've always had. And I think that's one of the, the real gems in the, in the crown of Eagle County schools is the diversity that we're able to offer in, in our high schools. And they'll have options of, of taking classes in their off day if their schedule is limited. I think this is a very unusual circumstance, but if a high school is only able to offer like a singleton class on an A day or a B day and a student has a majority of their classes on an A day, if they, if they need to come in on a B day to take that singleton class, that offer, that option would be available to them. Transportation would not necessarily be provided for them, but if they have transportation and they want to take that class on their off day, both Battle Mountain and Eagle Valley are open to that, but we think that would be a very limited incident. I wanted you to see what a sample student schedule would look like. So here you got your days of the week across the top and your periods on the left. Understand that the, the minutes are not on here because they vary by every school and it would be too many slides if I showed you for each school. But just understand this student is probably a 10th grader and they're taking classes at school Monday, Thursday. And then on Tuesday, Friday, they're going to have flipped assignments. They'll have live assistance available. And this student has opted not to take a seventh period and instead wants to take SAT prep on, on Wednesday morning. You could substitute in their automotive class at our, at our Spring Creek campus or Pro Start Culinary at Battle Mountain High School. So there, there are other things that might get substituted into that Wednesday slot, but this is just a sample schedule so you can see what it would look like. That also brings to mind what does a teacher's schedule look like? And again, minutes will vary. You'll see some variation between Battle Mountain and Eagle Valley as to how they set up their, their minutes in their day. But I, I think that this gives you a, a sample of, so be a science teacher. So on Mondays and Thursdays, they'll teach Group A students. So they'll have three biology sections in the morning and three chemistries in the afternoon. And then on Tuesday, they'll switch and they'll get the B group and, and teach that, that same lesson. I think it's important to note that here for high school, that in a typical work week for a high school, they would be planning four lessons per class, four lessons of in-person instruction. In this model, what they'll be teaching on group or on a Monday will be the same lesson that they teach on a Tuesday. So they can effectively recycle that lesson plan. But they'll also need to, to develop a lesson plan for what the students are doing at home on, on their out-of-school day. So in terms of the net planning for element, for, excuse me, for high school teachers, they'll, they'll still be developing four lessons a week as they were before. Two of those lessons will be in-person instruction and two of them will be online learning. On Wednesday, you can see all the different meetings that a high school teacher's going to attend. There'll be a professional learning community where they can focus on how to improve their practice. Department planning, so that's going to be very content-specific. An individual education plan meeting. So these, these need to occur to review the plans for individual students. They'll also have some office hours where they'll be available online for students. And then they'll have a big chunk of individual plan and you'll see that they have some additional plan windows on Monday, Thursday with this particular teacher's model. And then at the very bottom, there's just a quick note that the teachers would wipe down high-touch surfaces after each class. So each high school will have to make sure that they allow minutes in between when the students leave so that they can spray down and wipe down those desks. Of course, we provide them with adequate PPE, masks, gloves, rotation of cleaning materials. So all of that will be covered. Finally, Red Canyon High School. As you're aware, Red Canyon has two campuses. They have a campus in Edwards and they have another one at our Spring Creek facility in, in Gipson. And they have a, a unique schedule that already has relatively low class sizes. But there are some changes that they would make. In the past, they've had their electives on Fridays and they would move that to Wednesday. If that- if that's the day that we choose as the planning day for the rest of the district. They're also limiting opportunities for cross-campus contamination. So presently, their teachers teach at both campuses, and they switch between campuses each day, which exposes them to a lot of students. In the new model, the staff would be assigned to a building, and they would stay there for four and a half weeks, so they wouldn't be rotating, and that dramatically cuts down their exposure. Students are also going to be limited in cohorts to 10 to 25 students, and students would lose a little bit of their options in terms of courses that they could take, and that's in efforts to keep them in those groups of 10 to 25 students throughout their day. This slide on school-level autonomy, it really covers all levels, so elementary, middle, and high school. How schools interpret this model will be very different. We have 17 different schools on 18 campuses, 19 if you count the World Academy online. They all have different facilities, different room sizes, they have teachers with different credentials and expertise. So we will work with principals, we trust principals to interpret this plan in a way that makes sense for them. The vast majority of our principals will see that this plan is very workable. We've got a couple that we're still trying to overcome some obstacles, but we're confident that we can do that. Principals will work with their teachers to develop their cohorts, their schedules, and their logistics to best fit the skillset, expertise and the facilities of their school. So we want teachers at the table with principals to work through these logistics, and we're able to compensate teachers and principals for coming together in the next few weeks, which is out of their contract time. But again, we are all going above and beyond in this summer. I think most of us have not had a summer who are in an administrative role. We've been working constantly, and we know that these guys have been out of contract and they're still working constantly. So we appreciate their time and will compensate them to have them at the table because their voice is needed, their ideas are valuable, and they'll contribute to making the solution for the whole building, and we're happy to compensate them for that. But I think the other point of this slide is that we will not, in this presentation, provide details about how Brush Creek is going to do their school drop-off. They're going to sort that out on their own. They've got their own facility, they've got their own traffic pattern, and they know what their parent community is capable and willing to do. So we're going to leave a lot of those details to principals, but we'll work with them through a list of all the different elements that they need to consider. And I've got to give kudos to our principals who have been working all summer in their levels groups, that they have been tremendous resources for each other. The ideas coming out of those meetings and how they brainstorm to problem-solve has been inspiring, and I think we'll see a lot more of that in the next few weeks. So now let me transition into talking about enrollment options and just summarizing for families who are viewing what this means. So I think the option that we expect most people to subscribe to is just attend your neighborhood school as you normally would, including open enrollment if you participate in open enrollment. Another option, though, is if you would still like to attend your neighborhood school, but you, your student, end up in a quarantine situation because of exposure to COVID, and your student needs to stay home for a couple of weeks, we would recommend that you stay enrolled in your neighborhood school, but participate online. So you're not moving out of that school, you're not transferring to World Academy, you're going to stay enrolled in Avon Elementary School. It's your neighborhood school, and you love it. What we're asking teachers to do is recognize that throughout this school year, we're going to have higher levels of absenteeism. That's a given, we have to accept that, but we need to accommodate that. We need to be mindful that families will be participating from home, that students need an opportunity to watch what's happening in the classroom. We need to have our lessons posted on Schoology in a consistent manner so that it's easy for families to follow from home. We believe that that's just a short-term solution, that's not a great long-term answer, but for a quarantine-type period, we believe we can manage that. And then the third option is World Academy. That's a standalone online school, that's an Eagle County School District program. It is, it can be managed at the neighborhood school, so your teachers at, let's say, Edwards Elementary School, one of them might be assigned to manage the World Academy students so that they can maintain that relationship with the neighborhood school. But this next slide really, I think, is, points out some of the key differences between staying in your neighborhood school online or choosing to go with the World Academy option. In your neighborhood school, if you're able to remain enrolled with them, if you choose that and you want to stay online and watch what's happening, it allows you to keep that connection and maintain the relationships with teachers and peers. You can follow along with the classroom lessons online, again, use Schoology, and there's no cost to that for families. So if that's the direction they want to go, they don't, they shouldn't expect that there should be any cost transfer to them. Students can easily transition out of that as necessary, it follows the scope and sequence of the classroom, so we really have to get families to understand that when we quarantine, and let's just anticipate that all of us are going to quarantine at some point, that we always want students to say to the teacher, "Hey, I'm going to be home for a couple of weeks starting tomorrow. I will be online, I'll be participating." What we don't want to happen is a student to disappear and two weeks later pop back on the radar and say, "Hey, what did I miss?" We can't, we can't get through a school year with that level of absenteeism and lack of engagement, so remaining enrolled in the neighborhood school online is the best way for us to accomplish that. And if that's what you want to do, you can make that arrangement with your neighborhood school principal. So let's transition and talk about World Academy for a minute. As a standalone online school that we manage, it really has limited contact with teachers. I wouldn't say there's no contact, but it's limited. Our teachers who supervise World Academy students basically serve as a support, they monitor progress, they reach out to families if there hasn't been a login in several days and ask if there's anything they can do to bring some support. If the student isn't getting content, they might find another teacher who can provide additional coaching or support if necessary for that student. It's a high student-to-teacher ratio, so one of our teachers could fairly easily supervise about 100 students who are engaged in World Academy content. It's self-paced, so students can move through it as fast as they want to, and again, there's no cost to families. We believe that this is an excellent option for families who are choosing to learn from home for a long term. So the transitions in and out of World Academy should occur at term breaks, meaning at the quarter or at the semester. This is not a good option for a two- or three-week quarantine. It takes a little while to learn how to do this. It takes the right kind of student who can be self-paced, and for families who can dedicate the time to monitor progress. Troy Dudley is the principal of World Academy. He will be collaborating with his fellow principals, so as students are interested in enrolling in this program, you can reach out to Troy, and then he would reach out to your neighborhood principal to see if those schools have somebody who would monitor students in World Academy. So for example, if your student goes to Red Sandstone Elementary School and you're interested in this model, Troy Dudley would work with Marcy Layman, principal at Red Sandstone, and say, "Do you have a teacher that is going to be working remotely?", and they will train that teacher how to supervise those students in World Academy. So it becomes like a World Academy slash Red Sandstone. Finally, I need to talk about what whole-school remote looks like. So there will be times when we have to shut down entire schools. We'll have COVID cases popping up, and we may have clusters, we may have full-on school outbreaks. When that happens, we can expect that at all levels, that attendance would be taken daily, that we would maintain synchronous learning schedules, and that was a huge ask of parents and students in our April-May effort, is that we need teachers tuned in with students online to maintain that consistency and that connection. We'll also utilize Schoology. That's going to be used to deliver and organize instructional materials as a consistent model. So you'll get familiar with it, you'll learn the icons, and teachers are working hard to make sure that they make that experience as consistent as possible for kids. And we'll maintain traditional grading practices. We did make some changes to grading in April and May. I think that was just, I stand by that decision, I think it was the humane move, considering the amount of duress that families were under trying to adopt a fast transition to remote learning. But we'll try to transition back to traditional grading practices as much as we can. With elementary schools, middle schools, and Red Canyon, they're going to be in a four-day, a week instructional model, similar to what we described previously, and at Battle Mountain, Eagle Valley, and BSSA, the hybrid schedule would stay in place, but that in-school instruction would just shift to online delivery. So I think with this slide, the logical question becomes, what are the thresholds for closing schools or going remote? I can't answer that question for all schools because we have different cohort sizes between elementary, middle, and high school. We have different rotation of students and staff in elementary, middle, and high school. So our thresholds for closing have to change, they have to be different and specific to the levels. So you'll see the next five slides here talk about the thresholds for closing, and at the bottom of each slide, you'll see in red that the decisions to quarantine or to close schools, these are always made collaboratively with Eagle County Public Health. I can't tell you how thankful I am to have a partnership with Heath Harmon, Becky Larson, Mandy Ivanoff. These three have been crucial in helping us develop these plans, and they'll be at the table with us through the duration. So let's look at this table for elementary. The cohort size is one classroom, so if you remember the visual that we saw several slides ago, a classroom might be 10 to 12 students. Okay, so that's your cohort size. If we do get one positive COVID case in that class of 12, then the action is going to be a 14-day quarantine for that class and that teacher. I understand that right now that the delay in getting a test back is eight to 10 days, and that's got to improve, and public health is working to improve that rate. So that means we're also going to have people who are sent home because they're symptomatic, and we don't know if they're positive for COVID. So we've got to make accommodations to our closures or quarantines for those who are symptomatic. We will always reach out to Eagle County Public Health and Environment and explain to them when a situation like that occurs, and they'll provide guidance after reviewing each incident. And I can't express enough how complicated that analysis is for public health. They have a list of different symptoms, and they will look at the acuity of each symptom. They will look at the distance that that individual has had from other students. They'll find out how consistent has everybody been about wearing masks. They'll find out how much time those students have been in close proximity. So they'll run through all these different questions, and then they'll make a recommendation as to whether we close down for two or three days until we get a negative test, or do we quarantine for 14 days? So there's a lot of fluctuation in there, or variation, and it really depends on the advice of the professionals in public health. Elementary schools can shut down, so I think we need to be prepared for that to happen. And the threshold for that is set at 5% of the total school population reporting symptoms or COVID-positive. So actually, COVID-positive is the standard right now from the World Health Organization, and the Colorado Department of Education is adopting that standard as well. And that would result in a 14-day closure. Let's transition to middle school. Middle school doesn't operate on that same kind of model with 12 kids in a class, they're working at a grade-level cohort. Remember, a grade-level cohort could be 100 to 125 kids. If we have one positive case in that grade level, they're going to need to quarantine for 14 days. But we'll also be watching for those who are symptomatic and those who are sent home with symptoms. Again, contacting public health, explaining to them the situation. And I think the key point here in all of these slides is that we will be shutting down the smallest cohort possible. So we're going to try to refrain from shutting down the whole school, you know, as much as we possibly can, and keep kids home, transition to remote learning only when absolutely necessary. A good example of that is when to shut down a whole middle school. We would only shut down a whole middle school to quarantine for 14 days if all three grade levels were in a shutdown. So if we had one grade level that had no positive cases and everybody was still doing well, we're going to keep those kids coming to school. We want as many kids coming to school in a normal situation for as long as we can. Red Canyon High School, with their two campuses and smaller classes, the cohort size then would be one class on one campus. So you can see some similarities here. One positive COVID case is going to quarantine that school for 14 days at that campus in that classroom. If we see symptoms, again, we're going to contact public health, they'll do their investigation, contact trace, and they'll come back with guidance as to how we manage that. The whole school, we're at that 5% population threshold again. So in a school like the Edwards Campus of Red Canyon, let's say they've got 90 students, so 5% would be, you know, five kids or staff members positive, and we would have to work with public health again to make that decision. For Battle Mountain, Eagle Valley, and BSSA, when they're operating in the hybrid model with the A group or a B group, that means they're going to have half the students in the building. So a positive COVID case could shut down an entire group for 14 days. That would exclude most of the teachers because it would only impact the teachers that that particular positive case was in their classroom, so it could be six or seven teachers out of 60, and the rest would be able to continue coming to work. If we have students out with symptoms, again, we're going to contact public health and get their advice as to what to do. We also see that 5% threshold for shutting down the whole school. All right, this slide is, this is the tough one. What does it take to shut down the district? And there are really two indicators that close down the entire district and move us to full remote. The first one is Eagle County's weekly key performance indicators. Back at the beginning of the presentation, I shared all the Eagle County metrics, and this is one of them. So that one of those links will take you to this dashboard. This compiles all of the different elements that they're tracking in terms of case count per 100,000, positivity rates, it includes disease prevalence, hospital capacity, so all those elements come into this indicator. It's updated weekly. If that is in the concern zone, in the red zone, that's going to push all of our schools to remote status. This is what the Colorado Department of Education is advising. This is how we have to operate in a high contagion environment to keep our staff and students safe. And in all honesty, the KPI, this key performance indicator, on Sunday was in the yellow zone. It was in the cautious zone, which means reduce contact with others. But this week, Monday, Tuesday, we moved into the red zone. We moved into the concern zone because we see a significant spread coming out of the Fourth of July weekend. So, you know, I'll go back to that slide where I talked about schools reflecting the values and norms of the community. We have five weeks to fix this. Five weeks, four really, four weeks to fix this before teachers start their planning for getting the school year kicked off. We have got to all do everything we can to push that needle back down into the yellow zone so that we can get schools open. So that means, you know, don't have your block party barbecue, do your birthday party virtually. You know, I see it in my own family, I see it in my own neighborhood, and it's hard for me to, you know, decline an invitation to a neighbor's party. I would love to go hang out, but I understand that we have an obligation as a district to get this school back on track, so I'm not doing those parties. You know, I'm not sending my kids to hang out with big gaggles of other kids, and frankly, not, you know, my kids aren't big fans of that policy right now. But, you know, we've got to get schools open, so let's work together as a community to try to push that needle back into the cautious zone. There's one other metric that could shut down our schools. If we have enough staff members request leave and we're unable to manage the schools, with the staff that remains, we're going to have to shut down. We have traditionally had a hard time securing an adequate pool of guest teachers and substitutes. Imagine how hard that is in a pandemic to try to get people to come and serve in classrooms and schools. So this is a real challenge, but with these two metrics, it pushes us into the remote zone. Second to the last slide here, health and safety protocols. These were covered in an exhaustive presentation two weeks ago on July 8th, so I'm not going to reiterate all these. Just know that we're dedicated to the five commitments of containment. We will develop the health checks upon entry, ask parents to conduct those at home, staff to conduct them on themselves at home. Every teacher will have an infrared touch, no-touch thermometer in the classroom, so we'll make sure that we're checking kids throughout the day. We'll do staggered lunches, recesses- We'll do staggered lunches, recesses and passing periods trying to, to cut down that proximity and the duration that, that students are, are in proximity to each other. We'll have multiple entrances and exits. And again, that'll be defined by your local school principal. Elevated cleaning protocols, we've been developing those all summer. They're exhaustive. We could do again, 53 slides on that as we did two weeks ago. With busing, we're working to pre-register students, assign seats, disinfect between AM and PM routes, require masks on buses just as we do in schools, keep windows open as weather permits. So lots, lots of mitigation there on buses. And with lunches, we are shooting to provide lunches in cafeterias and gyms. We're going to spread kids out a lot more, utilize every square inch that we can to keep lunches as, as normal as we can. And for students who are not in school because they are quarantined or because they're on a remote day in the hybrid model, we will have grab and go lunches available for them to pick up because it's important that we provide consistent, healthy lunches for students. So these details, a lot of these details are being sorted out by principals and they'll be able to provide those details as we get closer to school. Finally, I want to just give another shout out to Eagle County Education Association. This is the last slide. We did wrap up negotiations just this morning. We've been negotiating since January. January was pre-COVID, but we started back then talking about how we might add some planning days to the calendar, but we have been negotiating now for seven months and that's, that's the longest negotiations I've ever engaged in. Typically we do it for two months, like April and May, but it's been a marathon and I appreciate the, the attitude that they bring to, to the process. We have a very collaborative process. I've worked in districts where it's contentious, where it's, where it's disrespectful and it's argumentative and it's insulting and we, we don't get to that point. I, I think that we recognize that we're a small community and that at the end of the day, we're all educators and I appreciate that attitude that they bring to the table. They're strong advocates for the health and safety of our staff and students. That's come through loud and clear in, in our presentations and our processes. Those processes have all been public and I've seen many of you in those meetings. So I think you can, you, you can confirm that there's times when there's disagreements, but we always come back in, in a positive and constructive way. We're also still working on, on details of what a COVID-19 sick bank might look like. So though we have wrapped up the majority of negotiations, we have created a subcommittee to develop a COVID sick bank to provide an extra safety net for paid time off for staff members so that they have, they, they can rest a little easier knowing that, that, that we're going to modify that policy a little bit. I would say that their level of support for this plan is conditional. I think there were some elements that they would have liked to have seen in the plan that, that I was just not willing to, to accommodate. Specifically, they would have preferred to see a specific cap on class sizes at each level, but I, I've, I've argued in that meeting that with all the different school sizes that we have, the different facilities and classroom spaces, that it just doesn't make sense for us to create a cap because principals are going to, to do this as best they can with the resources that they have. They wanted to ensure social distance at all levels. I, I appreciate that desire. I think the model that we've created provides for greater social distancing at each level, but those distances are different and exposure is different. So our, our previous presentation on July 8th, we talked about layers of protection and requiring masks in school is, is one of those layers and probably the most effective, but it's a different layer in elementary. When you have 10 to 12 kids who are with that teacher for, for three weeks in a row. In high school, it's different because we're cutting the population in half. We're, we're getting rid of some desks and chairs so that, that students can spread out more. And, and middle school, we're, we're employing more teachers to get class sizes down. So we, we don't have a, a designated social distance target other than to say that we're, we're, we're exhausting every effort that we can to, to create more distance. And, you know, when we say that school autonomy, that, when we say that schools have autonomy to sort out logistics, I, I think for the association that, that leaves a lot of question marks and they, they'd like, they'd like to know exactly what those details look like, but at this point we're, we're not able to provide those and, and that's, that's how we landed on conditional support. But I appreciate that we were able to get to that level of support and their willingness to, to work with us to get there. So to the board, that is the presentation. You are looking at, at three options that don't come in any specific order. We, we will use whichever one makes sense for our epidemiological data as we approach the start of school. Lots of questions to still be sorted out and most of those are going to happen at the building level with, with teachers and principals working collaboratively together. So my, my final plea is, is to our community. We, we are very thankful for the support that you've provided to our schools in financially, in your volunteerism, in your creativity and your ideas that you send to us. But in the next month, I, I have to ask that we work together to try to, to bring that key performance indicator into the yellow zone. Nobody wants schools to open more than I do and we can only do that if we work together. So with, with that, I'll, I'll stop and stop the presentation so that we can get back to seeing who is, is speaking and take any questions if you have them. And the team is on, district leadership team is on right now, so they can also assist me with answers. So I, are we at a point now where you can see the presenter instead of my presentation? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience. I know that was a long presentation, but there's a lot going on. I see Shelley talking, but I, I can't hear her. Is that my computer or hers?
That's me, I couldn't hear her either.
No, I can't hear her either.
But the mic's on, so that's weird.
Yeah.
We'll get it figured out, Shelley. We, we, we definitely want to hear you say this. The green lights are on, but we can't hear you. Well, thank you very much, Superintendent Paulman. That was a, that's a lot of information and as we said before, the plan is, you know, not going to make anybody happy. People who think we're not conservative enough, think people who think we're being too conservative, a lot of it is beyond our control because we have the metrics and the data that we have to follow from public health. That red zone is something that we can't control. We got to hopefully get us back into the yellow and then things can really change when we have community into the green, although I know that's forecasted to be quite a ways out. What do they say about that, Mr. Paulman?
The KPI gets updated weekly, so it's a bit of a lagging indicator, but you know, we, what we're experiencing right now is, is the fallout from the July 4th holiday and all the socialization associated with it. But that means that we, we have four weeks that we can make an impact. So if we start today, we start right now, I, I think in a couple of weeks that we could bring that back down into the yellow. That's my hope.
Um, I have a couple of questions and this isn't obviously anything that we can really control. I know you've been working with, you know, the county. In terms of our testing times, I don't know if it was on one of our last meetings or we were talking about in Glanoid, it sounds like they have, you know, much more expedited testing. What is happening to try to expedite that? Because I know every year my kids go back to school. I mean, there, there's just, there's so many sicknesses that have nothing to do with COVID and they come around. So it seems like if we're taking kids that are symptomatic and potentially, you know, shutting down classrooms or potentially, you know, larger cohorts, you know, it, it just seems like it's going to be really hard to, to keep our doors open for, you know, really any period of time. Cause I feel like being at school, everybody's always getting a sniffle or something, you know? And now anytime somebody has one of those things, even though it's most likely not COVID, we sort of all, you know, have to assume that it is and be careful. So it seems like this sort of lack of like expedited testing is going to be a huge hindrance to having kids back in school. I mean, and I know we can't really control that, but.
The work for both facilities, both value and Dale Hill, Mountain Family, they, they all have access to the quick turnaround tests, but they're in limited capacity. So they tend to use those for people who have the highest acuity, those who are, are, you know, obviously in really bad condition or, or for those who are in medical frontline providers. So they, they don't have the capacity to, to give those to every person who comes in. I can say that we are reaching out to some other providers to see if we can procure some other options for testing. So we haven't exhausted that or, or left that totally to public help itself. So we're exploring some options as to how we might be able to, to bring greater testing capacity to our organization. At this point, we don't have a commitment from a partner yet, so I'm reluctant to say more, but I, I can say that we're, we're exploring some options there.
Um, great. Yeah, it just seems like that's sort of key. I mean, we need that in general, but it seems like to keeping schools open, that's essential. The other question I have a little bit is about the ski and snowboard academy because they're such a unique school and obviously they probably don't know what's going to be happening with, you know, their ski season and kids traveling and everything else. But is there a reason why they're sort of lumped into a battle mountain in terms of sort of the two day a week, you know, virtual flipped classroom model? Cause in terms of ski training and everything else, it seems like, I mean, I know they have some autonomy at the building level, but I'm not so sure why they were lumped in.
Yeah, that, that was a recent change actually. And working with Principal Wade Hill, he tried to model the four day a week schedule for their school, but they, they weren't able to, to provide the diversity of course offerings and the supports for students that they wanted to in that model. So they preferred to switch to the hybrid and in, in that hybrid, they, they can accomplish more of their goals.
Okay, great. I wondered if it was a sort of a building level decision. Thank you.
I have some questions.
So.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Go ahead. Okay. Can you hear me right? I'm in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So just to clarify, the neighborhood school online option is only if kids go into quarantine? That's the only time families can do the remote online versus the World Academy?
I, I wouldn't say that that's, that's a hard and fast rule. I, I think that it's intended to support that duration of absence. So if a student's going to be gone for, for one, two, three weeks, that makes sense. So sometimes that might be a quarantine, sometimes they may be really sick or they may, they may have to travel out of state for some reason. It, it makes sense for a short-term absence, but it, I don't know that it's our best option if the student's going to be out for longer than a month.
Okay, so if families are not comfortable going back, I know it's going to happen, like if they are not comfortable going back the four days a week, then they have to enroll in the World Academy. That's like the option they get?
Well, they have lots of options. If, if they want one that's managed by Eagle County Schools and that they'll get local support for and that's free, we offer World Academy. I think that support is huge. I think knowing that you have local teachers who you can lean on and use it. That instruction is very well thought out, but if you get, if you're taking like Algebra II or Calculus online, that's hard and you might need the assistance of the teacher. So a World Academy student would have access to that support through, through our system. So I think it, it makes an excellent support for, for families who are considering homeschooling for a long period. And again, you can't beat the rest. I should point out that on Thursday, tomorrow evening at, at 5:30, we're going to hold a more in-depth information session about World Academy. So there's still a lot of people online. If you visit our, our website, eagleschools.net, you can see the link to that. At 5:30, Principal Troy Dudley will provide an in-depth presentation on what World Academy is and what it isn't. That'll be in English at 5:30 and yes, I'm going to hold it at 6:30.
Sort of along those lines, I mean, we sort of give them the option of in school with the periodic quarantine or out of school where they could watch remotely or World Academy. But I think we need to be realistic about the conversations that are going on out there about not sending kids back. So, you know, if someone doesn't come back and goes to a private school or they decide, they pick a different curriculum and they decide not to use World Academy, we lose $8,300 a kid roughly. I mean, this is sort of my back of the envelope calculation. And if we had 6,700 kids-ish, then if five percent of kids, if one in every 20 kids, for whatever reason, doesn't come back or, you know, does their own thing and that own thing doesn't happen to be World Academy, then we lose $2,790,000, which is roughly 35 positions. So at 35 positions with 15 schools, you know, and I realize they're not spread out this way, but you know, it's roughly 2.3 FTE per school. And if only 2% even do this, so two out of every 100 kids choose something different, that's 134 kids or a million 116 or something. So that's about 14 teachers. I, I guess my questions are, I mean, today on the Eagle County Education Association, Educator Association meeting, it sounds like having 12 or 13 is pretty optimistic in a, in particular in an elementary or, you know, in that elementary model, that there is some concern that those could be 15, 16, 17 kids. And I just worry that if we're also, you know, on September 1st, looking at each other and saying, all right, we need to get rid of 30 positions or something. I mean, we simply do not have the money to keep, to pay those teachers if the kids don't show up. And I think that's, you know, there is a high probability that that's going to happen, which would then cause those numbers of these small groups in the elementary school level to increase as well. So I, I do have concerns around that. I mean, I, there are other things about this point. Well, the other thing I would say is that when we went from a five day a week for elementary to a four day a week, I think that the ECA needs to understand that that is probably going to be appealing to less people. So given that that is going on, we're probably going to lose more positions. If it were five, if they were there five days a week, you know, it may be more desirable for more people. But given that there are some other options that are saying they're going to be there five days a week, or if they, you know, need to quit their job anyway because they can't, they don't know what to do on that day. I, I don't know. I just think that the four day a week model is going to increase that number. So we just need to be cognizant of that. I'm not saying that it makes sense to go five days, but we are going to lose more FTE, more kids, which equals more FTE by going to a four day model. And I guess the other question I have is sort of, when would we, I mean, at what point do we ask people that? I mean, if people, someone already knows they're not coming, you know, it's going to be really hard to make these decisions in the first week of school or second week of school, but they're going to have to be made. So is there a plan in place to ask people ahead of time or are we just going to wait and see who shows up and count them up? Or what's the thought there?
It's a little bit of both. So we have schools already making that outreach, talking to families and asking what their level of commitment is to come back. But you know, if we made that call in early June, the level of commitment would have been quite high. You know, we had 73% of the public tell us that we want to come back five days a week. We asked that question five weeks later and it dropped to 40%. So, you know, as the data changes, I don't think it's widely known that the KPI is in the red zone. I mean, I haven't seen that in, in the daily today, but that, that's kind of a big deal. We're one of only 13 counties in the state that's in that situation. So we, we can continue to ask the question and, and the challenge that we'll face is, you know, in two weeks, the data will be different and the opinion will be different. So we can keep asking the question, but on game day, when school starts, it'll be a different answer than what we asked two days before. So that, that it's a moving target and it's, it's a, it's a metric that will, will never be accurate because the data is constantly changing. That informs that confidence level. Well, you, you outlined a, a really scary situation for our schools and for our teachers and our organization. And it's one that every school district in the nation is facing right now. And it's one that every school district in the nation is facing right now. We're fully aware that families are looking for other options. We talk to them every day. They call principals, they call us, they call our teachers, they're trying to recruit our teachers to do part schools and micro schools. Like, we're fully aware of what's happening. But what we can provide is high-quality facilities, well-trained teachers, and we know that this is temporary. This is not the situation that we're going to be living in forever. So we got to put our heads down and get our best ideas and try to work through this as best we can.
One thing we haven't talked about yet is our community partners on that off day. It was mentioned before that the Youth Power 65, 365, Walking Mountains, all of our different team members, Black Community, Bay Area District, said that they would be willing to help step up if we did go to this model. Can you give us a little bit of background on that and if I can help people with their five day week?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I don't know if Melissa Reewell-Fouan is on. She's Assistant Superintendent and manages our partnerships with a lot of those organizations. But we invited them to the table last week and said, hey, this is a plan that we're considering. You know, of 178 school districts in Colorado, over 100 of them operate on a four day week. Before COVID, like that's their normal schedule. And in all those communities, those nonprofit partners provide what they call fifth day option. So we asked our partners, I see Melissa just jumped on. We reached out to those partners and I'm so impressed at how quickly they rallied. We had a couple of dozen people on a call within a 24-hour invitation. And to a person, they all said, we will do whatever we need to do. We understand what our community needs and we'll try to focus programming on those days. So let me turn it over to Melissa and see if she can provide any more detail.
Well, you know, part of what Phil talked to everyone about too was that we would be able to offer some use of facilities, possibly some assistance with transportation. What some of the things that they were talking about is they're concerned with the size of cohorts. You know, so the groups that were able to operate outside or have more space, I think would be able to accommodate more students. We also talked about the possibility of doing some of our partner organizations' curriculum even on that fifth day. So things may be Bright Future Foundation that's doing an SEL curriculum, or Mountain Youth, doing that maybe in conjunction with another partner to pair an athletic type, and, you know, adventure kind of activity with an SEL learning experience. So social-emotional learning with some of our prevention curriculum as well. We'd really have to talk about if that day is only going to be optional for students, or if that day would be something that we would expect students to participate in sometime. So there are a lot of different opportunities. The REC Centers were interested in maybe offering schools out camp for some families. And other organizations like SOS were interested in looking at that option for even mountain usage, because it's going to be tough to get students on the mountain on the weekends, you know, if the mountain is open with any tourist traffic and that kind of thing. And so it may open up some other opportunities for kids to do activities that may be more limited when areas are having more people in them, I guess. You know, like the mountain would have more tourists or that kind of thing. So they seemed really excited about the opportunity. And as Phil said, we've been working really closely together on a lot of different pieces, making sure that all of our students are getting certain curriculum at different grade levels with the Wellness Committee work. And I think that this really aligns well. And the other organizations, like Phil had said, the fifth day concept is really, it's not about like a childcare service. It meets the needs of multiple ages, but it's really about enriching experiences that you don't always get the opportunity to do in the school day. You know, and we might be able to cycle kids through. You know, some kids could get onsite probably at Walking Mountains. Right now, we're not going to do field trips this year. But if we kind of have small cohorts of kids that are able to do those visitations or break up in groups, I think it would give us opportunities to do some things that we can't do within the regular school day.
So you do envision that they would stay in the same cohort that they're in during the school week? Or you think they would mix with other kids?
Yeah. Do it as much as possible, you know, with smaller groups. But some of them, it would be very similar to kind of how the camps and things are running right now. You know, they would try and do more socially-distanced activity in an environment that would leave enough room for social distancing. So it would really vary depending on the need that the community expresses for it. You know, if they really, for the younger kids, really need more of a childcare situation, that would probably look more like a schools-out camp situation with those small cohorts that are socially-distanced. And if it was, if it was that they were going to keep their kids at home, but they wanted some engaging activities for them to do, Celebrate the Beat or one of our other organizations could offer virtual classes on those days for kids to participate. If you wanted them to do something from home, but something different than what they might be doing during the regular week. So we can offer virtual as well as in-person options for that fifth day.
I just worry that the in-person, you know, suddenly the cohorts, you know, if you've got kids across different, you know, that came out of different cohorts in elementary, then you're closing down multiple rooms if something, you know, happens that with kids that were in the...
Yeah, and yeah, like Bill said, it was a 24-hour, let's call them together. You know, so I don't think it's well-vetted yet exactly how that would work. But they are very willing to be part of the solution in offering things for our kids and families to do on that fifth day. And then I think that we'll have to risk or assess the risk of that and what those cohorts could look like. You know, and then maybe just certain groups are invited on different weeks, depending on what their cohort is or their cohort group during the other four days. I see a lot of thinking going on.
I have another question about a middle school, not to, I mean, if somebody has more questions about this sort of off day, you should go now while we're on that topic, but I have a question about middle school. It's a different topic. Good. So in the middle school, I guess I'm not quite understanding, is the reason to push more teachers into each grade level and make the cohort smaller, or not the cohort smaller, the cohort is the whole class, but to make the actual each class size smaller, just to spread them out more in the room? Or is it, I mean, given that they're going to mix with each other anyway, class by class, so it's really just that the desks can be farther apart and...
Yeah, the intent is just to create a little bit more distance and provide, yeah, the cohort doesn't change, so you're just in that classroom, creating more space for them.
But you go to first hour with certain kids and second hour with different kids, and so you're mixing with everyone. So it's just that you're sitting further from them?
Yeah, in the grade, yeah.
Right, right. Which, I mean, right now, I don't, I mean, with a few exceptions, I think they stay within their own grade. It would just be that they would be in a bigger size class usually, right? Katie?
Yes, yes. It's also to keep our specials teachers from seeing all kids in the building every day. So they would be assigned to the grade level parts for like a quarter, which would also be keeping staff safer.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I don't necessarily have a question per se, but I can't stop to think that delaying a decision or not making a decision is also a type of decision. So I'm thinking that, I can only speak for myself, but I would say that whether I agree with all or not agree with anything at all, I feel that we still have to make a decision regardless. And we might not be able to make everyone happy and most likely, yet, we have another tough decision to make here in the short term that I've been appointed to. But I feel that if the, if everyone here allows us to make those decisions as we move through, then I think we'll be in a better stand than just delaying things over. And as of my very own opinion, I would say that I would very much like to see those kids continue to thrive and continue to be safe in our county, but as well as to receive the education that they very well deserve. Now, if that is via the web or in person, or however they prefer to keep it, I would say that I would stand better to keep educating them than not to. As of everything else, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time of doing it. I mean, I know it's hard making those type of projects and presentations and everything so that we try to make it all happy for everyone. But we must be realistic in that sense in meaning that we can't make everyone happy. And other than that, I truly don't have a question or a comment in reference to it. I think I've received the information that I need to, so thank you.
Did we get rid of the issue of that teachers would be checking kids' temperatures on arrival? Did that go away or whatever happened with all of that?
No, we're still going to try to do the health checks. We're planning on doing those before coming in. Teachers will have to take care of their own health checks before they come in. But we will have enough thermometers so that there's one in every classroom. And then it'll just be like a morning bus duty or an entry duty. At every school, there are individuals who are engaged in greeting kids when they come in. And by diversifying where kids come in and sending different grade levels into different doors, or utilizing different entrances, that becomes a more manageable task. With the logistics of that, who does it and how frequently, that'll all be worked out by principals. But there is still value to doing the health checks until we hear from CDE that they don't believe it is anymore. And that's been a conversation with them. Frankly, it's been an element that has been debated, the efficacy and value of doing health checks. But their advice right now is to provide them, so it's our intent to do so.
I have a question. I'm just thinking of going to four day a week, plus the week, so, you know, less instruction hours, plus the week that the teachers need for planning. Is there a plan where the days are going to be less special?
Did she freeze up?
Special, so less instruction hours.
You posed up right at the question.
So, sorry. The kids are having one less day a week of instruction hours, plus the whole week that the teachers need for planning, which I'm totally for it. I know they need it. Is there a plan on how to keep up with the curriculum and not let the kids fall behind on what they need to learn for the school year?
We have, yeah. Our department has evaluated the benchmark standards and figured out what the priorities are in there, and they've provided that guidance to the content level teachers. So Katie, if you're still on, could you talk about the work that Renee has done to ensure that we stay on task with the standards?
Sure. So Renee started last spring with our Survival Guides, we called them, and it really distills down the priority standards and clarifies this is exactly what needs to be taught. Some of our resource providers are also doing this work. So Bridges, for example, which is the math curriculum resource in the elementary school, has come out with guides for the fall that talk about how to, what is really, really necessary in that resource and how to kind of narrow it down, which is great because that was actually some work that we started with Bridges before COVID, because they had a lot of stuff that was just kind of extra and it slowed things down a little bit. So I'm pretty excited that they're doing that work. That's the only one that I'm aware of that started that, but I've heard talk that other vendors are also starting to really kind of distill things down. Renee Westenfelder also did a lot of work in June with different curriculum teams on making our curricular frameworks more teacher-friendly and also really emphasizing again those priority standards so we can just really focus on what needs to happen.
I hesitate, this is kind of along those lines, and I hesitate to ask it because it's not very PC and I think I already know the answer. But in terms of who is in which group, is it going to be completely random? Or will there be, you know, we know that this whole group of kids is reading at a certain level and could be taught at that level, you know, which I know goes down the tracking path. So I'm aware of the, like I said, the answer I'm probably going to get. But I do wonder, you know, if in a normal classroom, you would have been pulled out for the red reading group or the blue reading group or whatever, you know, if you've only got 12 kids in your class, how does that work?
In our conversations with principals, every single one of them values diversity. We know that's our community and we know that's our schools. So we would try to strive for that moving forward as kids get into cohorts. But we know intentional separation or segregation, and that small class size will allow for that more differentiated virtual instruction. But diversity is our reality and we embrace it and we'll try to reflect that in the classrooms that we create.
I think one thing to add along those lines is that because we have these much smaller classrooms, especially at the elementary school level, that really allows for more differentiation and individualized instruction. So if you have half as many classes, you know, one of the teachers I spoke with was super excited. She was like, oh my God, if I could have 12 kids in a class, that's my dream class. So I think that will help to address that, Shelley, because they'll be able to make that more individualized.
And so are you picturing that the GT teacher becomes one of these, you know, has a group? So on Wednesday, that person may be working with a classroom teacher? Or do we just say nuts to GT and it's not something we worry about anymore?
Absolutely, as you described. So that teacher would work with classroom teachers, either team-level planning or co-planning. And at that point, you're going to get that coaching on what the Advanced Learning Plan is. So the classroom teacher will need to execute the IEPs and the ALPs and English Language Plans. So they'll get coached on that from those content experts. But we would never let those plans go without support.
And that's already the model that exists for GT at the secondary level. Middle schools don't have a GT teacher the way that elementary schools do, but we have district people who are assigned to different schools and they coach teachers on how to do extensions, what the ALP goals are, all of that sort of thing.
So do we not have GT sort of elective anymore in middle school?
But it's always been a regular teacher at the school who teaches that elective. And then the GT specialist person supports them in what that curriculum and those resources look like. It's something I've always wished for, is a GT teacher at each secondary school.
I mean, it sounds like we're winding down, but I mean, I do just want to say that I'm starting to get more sleep. I mean, I feel like when it was this idea that we were going to have to choose, it seemed ridiculous and sort of unfair to any of us because... because, given that the landscape was changing every single day, how would we ever make the right decision? And even if we made the right decision for the first day of school, it may not be the right decision on the tenth day of school. So, I really, really appreciate the model that has, you know, given this is what's going on, this is what we'll be doing. If something else is going on, this is what we'll be doing. If a kid gets sick, this is what we'll be doing. That's incredibly helpful to me because, like I said, I just, I mean, I would lay awake at night and think like, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I don't think any of us know. And on one extreme, you're thinking, I'm not sending kids into a building that I'm not sure, you know, about their safety. And on the other hand, you're like, how in the world can we not send kids back to school? They need, so, I mean, it was just no win where I feel like this is, it's the right way to approach it. I mean, it's something that looks at what's going on and given what's going on, we make the, and using the guidance of public health and all these other organizations, that we make a decision that at that moment is the best decision and we'd be ready to, we're ready to turn on a dime if that's necessary. So, I mean, I just want to say like how much better I feel now than the last time that we had this discussion two weeks ago. And I just thought, I don't know, you know? I don't think any of us know, you know? So, kudos to those of you that worked on it, and I know it's a lot of work. But I do think it's, we're getting a lot closer to, you know, sort of, if there is such thing as a right answer, it's, you know, it's much closer to that in my mind.
Michelle Mestoz Stecker, who isn't able to be with us, she did send an email and she did echo that sentiment that Shelley just expressed, that she's become a lot more comfortable with the plan and moving forward. And I think the modalities of it, we, as Phil mentioned, ideally, what we want is all kids in front of a teacher every day, five days a week, but we have to balance with the realities of the pandemic. And so, by being able to be nimble and move back and forth with the ultimate goal of getting kids back together as much as possible, just depending on what public health, I think we're on the right track and appreciate the flexibility. I know there's a lot of people who don't like the unknowns. It's not really comfortable for very many of us. But I think that it's better than committing to something that will change and when our needs change. And hopefully, the community will work together and the health community is going to come up with answers and have vaccines and testing and be able to get that needle into the yellow for sure and into the green as soon as possible and get the whole nation and the whole world back on track. But it's going to be step by step and people working together and compromising and just trusting each other and doing the best they can do for their family and probably people's families. None of this is easy. But I appreciate all the work that the team has done to come up with this sort of broad-ranging, adaptable plan. Wish us luck and working forward with it. And all the work that's going to go into the next month. If you think anybody's going to get any rest in this next month before school starts, I think that's the wrong answer. We sure appreciate all the work that's going to go into it. Any more comments?
One other positive, I think, is, I mean, particularly at the elementary level, it's a different way of doing things. And we may learn things from it. We may find that in a year from now, we're like, why didn't we always do it this way? Or, you know, or this part of it worked and that other part didn't. Or, but I just feel like, you know, it's unusual times. It calls for unusual actions and we may, you know, take that as an opportunity to sort of experiment and come up with things that, you know, help us in the future. And I mean, I even think that from sort of the flipped classroom, you know, we have teachers that have dabbled in it and have, I think that, you know, it's going to be interesting. It's something that we'll learn from and all teachers are going to have to be more tech-savvy. And it's sort of pushing everyone's hand, just like, you know, if my mother can get on Zoom, I mean, that is, you know, we are forcing some people that were potentially reticent about taking on some of these new ways of teaching. And I think, you know, we may be better off for it. So, I mean, I think there are a lot of downsides, but I think there are also going to be some upsides, so.
I really appreciate you expressing that perspective, Shelley, because I hold that perspective too. I know we learned a lot from going fully remote and how to improve that. And I think we're going to learn a lot about instruction and there could be a lot of benefits from the small groups that we're going to have here for the social distancing.
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion if we're going to move on with this, yes.
I gotta find it.
I'm moved to accept the plan as presented to restart instruction for the school year 2020-2021.
I'll say.
Are there further questions? Missy?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion by Dr. Long and a second by Mr. Almanza. We'll vote. Almanza?
Fernando Almanza, aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Kelly Alter, aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Kate Cottarella, aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Shelley Jarno, aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Tivarkunas?
Lucila Tivarkunas, aye.
Motion passes the floor, thank you.
Well, I sure do appreciate everybody coming in. And I was naively thinking that when we scheduled this meeting, that we would just have a ten-minute calendar adjustment to make instead of the, you know, two-and-a-half-hour discussion about the future of instruction here in Eagle County. And I appreciate everybody listening in and the board members tuning in, especially those of us who are in our home office. I've been super impressed by the level of engagement of the community, even more so tonight, the thoughtful and respectful process that we've all gone through with teachers and staff. And it's been challenging. We're trying to respect everybody's needs and balance that all out here, flexibility and the willingness to work together into the unknown and then just the trust in the process that the admin at each school is going to do the best that they can do. And each plan is going to be a little bit different because the building and the school and the staff. And that's going to be challenging and just appreciate the patience and the confidence our community has in us as we work through this next month to get kids in the doors on this new model for now. And is there any other comments as far as feedback and evaluation of the meeting from the board members? No, I'm head shaking. Thank you all so much for being here and we'll see you at the first meeting in August, which is, I believe, on August twelfth. Is that correct? We got some nods there. All right, this is, stop me if you don't want me to end the meeting right now. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Meeting adjourned.